We're live.
Okay. Welcome, everybody, to our special call City Council meeting 10-2. We're going to get this thing called to order and we'll start with roll call. I'm going to call on you as you appear on my screen. Amy Patillo.
Here.
Gavin Massengill.
Here.
Sarah Hudson.
Yeah.
Wendy Hundley.
Here.
Buck Shapiro.
Here.
Great. Obviously Mayor Dyson is here. We also have City Secretary Ashley Wayman and City Administrator Amber Lewis joining us. We also have City Attorney, I think it's Megan Santi, that's on with us this afternoon. Hi, Megan.
Good afternoon. Thank you.
Okay. Pleasant trees aside, let's go ahead and open up public comments. This is open to anybody from the public who wishes to address the council on anything not on the regular agenda, i.e. your strike force, the comprehensive plan discussion and TCAD Board of Directors discussion. So if you've joined us today to discuss anything else other than that, this is your time. On your screen, you will find a, well, if you're joining us from a laptop or PC, there is a hand icon down at the bottom. Please click on that to let us know that you have public comments. When you're called on, you'll click the mute or the microphone button, which is going to be orange on your screen. You'll turn it to blue and then we will be able to hear you. We're going to, once again, ask that you keep your comments limited to three minutes. If you're joining by phone, I understand, and Ashley, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I might have this. Finally, it's star two. Star two to raise your hand. Similar process. Not all the time will we know who is on specifically. Your name doesn't necessarily pull up. So if you are going to speak, please also make sure you identify yourself. And if you're a resident, include your address. With regards to being called on, also, if you're dialing in, more likely than not, Ashley will call on you by the last four digits of your phone number. All right, did I miss anything before we move into the public comments? Nope. Great. Tell you what, the public comments are now open at 12:06. Do we have anybody with their hands up?
We don't.
We don't? Okay, just give it one more second. All right. Going once, twice. Okay, done. In that case, public comments are now closed to 12:06 and we will move into regular agenda. Discussion and possible action to make appointments to the comprehensive plan strike force. If everybody recalls the, what was adopted by council at the last meeting, provided for council members to make their singular nominations and then to vote from the dais on the pool of applicants. At this point, I'm going to go let the council members identify nations.
Are you going to call on us one by one or how are we going to do it?
Mic froze up.
Yeah.
I thought he was just giving us the silent treatment.
Sorry, I'm traveling. This wasn't a good time because my phone's going in and out. I'm not in a cellphone spot.
Maybe we start.
Okay, well, as I guess, I guess I'm on deck until the mayor comes back. Amber, it looks like he's coming back. Okay.
Sorry, guys. That was a really inopportune time to freeze up. What I said was I'm going to call on each member individually. If you appear on my screen and you guys can note your nomination as well as provide any background that you may feel is necessary. And I'm just going to call on you as you appear on my screen. Amy, you have, you have the honors in the floor.
Great. Thanks. Well, I'm really excited. This is our first time that I can recall as council members to get to have an appointee to something and get to choose that. And so I really appreciated Wendy's work in putting together this process. And so I would like to appoint Jeff Green. He lives over on Timberline and is someone who has been raising his family here with Nicole. And they have three amazing kids, really active in the pool. And they also run their business out of Rollingwood in the commercial district area. So I'm really looking forward to his input. And also, just as someone who has a property that backs up to Timberline, I know that that's been something that is important in this conversation and look forward to his perspective on that.
Great. Thank you. Gavin, you're up next, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. I echo those sentiments of Councilmember Patillo. My intent is to appoint Drew Flahive. But before I do that, it's a little bit awkward because none of us have had a chance to talk about who our appointees are. I assume someone is going to appoint Ryan Clinton. I do think that's important. Ryan is taking a very active role. Is that someone's intent? Okay, great. With that, then, I appoint Drew Flahive. Drew is a good guy, just down the road from me on Groveport. Met him for the first time several years ago at a cul-de-sac party that we had. He's got a good level head, good real-world experience that I think will bring a lot to the, to the strike force. So Drew's my guy.
Great. Thank you, Gavin. Sarah Hudson, you, you're up next and floor's yours.
All right. I am appointing Brooke Brown, who lives on Nixon. She's been a resident for 40 years. An attorney, served as the city's judge for a while. Her ex-husband was mayor while she was living here. TML director. She has a lot of background in ADA and other pertinent subjects, I think. You know, building plans with her church where they had to come up with, you know, consensus on what they were going to put in place. So I think she would be a great asset to the strike force.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Wendy, floor's yours.
Hello. So I think I raised my hand on this one a minute ago, but I am, I've asked Ryan Clinton to be my appointee. He has obviously been really involved in the comprehensive planning process since the beginning. He's got a young family. They're on Timberline. He's an attorney. He's really, I think, a level-headed guy. And he's going to be a good addition to the, to the strike force. And I appreciate him being willing to serve in that capacity, so.
Great. Thank you. And Buck, we don't have you on camera, but you're joining us via phone.
Yes, sir. So I, I would like to appoint Mo Goyle. He, he's a great guy. He's got two kids, lived in the neighborhood for a while. We, we don't agree on anything politically, so nobody can, in the neighborhood, can say that my appointment is self-serving because it is far from it. But I think with that said, he's a level-headed guy and he would be a great addition to the strike force.
Great. Thanks. All right, council, I appreciate your time and thoughtfulness that you put in with your nominations and for your nominations, to your nominations. Thank you all for your willingness to loan your time to a very important process for the city. Next up is mine. And I have the honor of also nominating the chair. It is up to the dais to accept or decline. I, as I think everyone is aware, nominate Tom Farrell. Tom Farrell, former mayor, several towns over, has donated countless numbers of hours to making sure that this is the community we all know and love. In truth, I think he's got a great reputation for bringing our community together. He's got a great ability to allow all sides and all voices to be heard. And he's just one of these guys with a really, really solid heart. So I'm, I'm very proud to say that Tom Farrell is my nomination for, for the chair and would encourage and I'm hopeful that the council sees the value in having his involvement.
Mayor, are we taking this up one by one with a motion for each? Or how are we working on the process for the appointment of these chairs?
That's a, well, that's an excellent, excellent question. I think, I think probably the best way to do it is to go down the list as you guys constructed with regards to filling certain positions, right? Your boards and commissions seats. I am wide open to a different process if you think that's, that's not the right way. I would offer, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I think that's the right way to do it.
Yeah, I think go ahead and filling the, kind of the designated seats with the appropriate applicants, assuming we have one forever, for every denoted position. After my review, I think we do. And then for the, kind of the at-large, what I would suggest there is council members, if you raise your hand, I'll acknowledge, acknowledge you. Ideally, make a motion to place one or, or maybe multiple, however you guys want to do it. Perhaps taking it one at a time might be almost like, almost like selecting teams, I guess, back in, back in junior high or something, maybe. But, and then everybody can, you know, if you get a second on the motion, some discussion about filling that at-large position and kind of going from there. Is that a process that everybody can feel comfortable with?
I am definitely comfortable with that. I just, I think I want to acknowledge, before we move on, the list of applicants that we had apply for the positions who are not currently serving on the boards and commissions. It is extraordinary and we have so much talent lined up there and so many resumes that were submitted. I, it just, it fills my heart to see how many active, engaged community members that we have. If anyone claims that we don't have people who want to serve our city, that is clearly a thing of the past. And I just, I want to acknowledge that because I have seen a level of engagement here that just makes me really, really proud to, to live in Rollingwood and to serve on the city council. So sorry to.
I, thank you, Wendy. I think I'd echo that sentiment. I believe it was right around 30, maybe 29 applicants. So obviously, a number of people that are willing to step up and, and help ensure that our community is on the right track, so.
Mayor, on that note, Mayor, on that note, if there are individuals that perhaps weren't chosen today but have, were willing to put in an application and as we maybe have vacancies on boards and commissions today or in the near future, I think it'd be, this would be a great starting point to go back to some of these individuals who have stepped up for this opportunity and see if they might be willing to engage in some of those other opportunities.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with that, with that more. And we do have vacancies across multiple boards and commissions at this point. And in truth, I know that we have some folks that are sitting on boards and commissions that are doing so simply after being there for a few years. They don't want to leave a chip unmanned. And so I'm sure they would love for, you know, a new refreshed voice to join those boards and commissions. So there's tons of opportunities for us all to be involved in this community. This community functions so much better when we do have this high level of involvement. And in truth, worst-case scenario, you get to know some of your neighbors, right? So not a bad, not a bad outcome at the end of the day. Amy, you had your hand raised?
Oh, I just was noticing that Sarah's connection seemed to be coming in and out. And I wanted to make sure before we started voting on anything that we addressed any issues if she was having technical issues.
Yeah, I got, I got kicked out and then it wouldn't let me get back in as a panelist. It kept letting me get in as a participant, but you couldn't see or hear me. So I'm, I'm back in.
Can we move to voting? Because I'm getting a loose signal in about 10 minutes.
Okay, well, I tell you what, the first thing I would ask is for you, for the council to either confirm or vote down my nomination for chair.
I move to accept the nomination of Tom Farrell for the mayor's nomination to chair this strike force.
We have a motion from Gavin and a second from, I think it was Buck. I'll call, or sorry, discussion council. Not hearing any who called for the vote. Amy Patillo?
Yes.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Buck Shapiro? Buck, did we lose you?
It's going in and out. Aye.
Okay. Tom, the ayes have it. Welcome to the, welcome to the strike force and really appreciate all the work that I know he's, he's already started undertaking. Okay, I'll tell you what, let's go through these, these various positions then. And Amber, I'm going to ask you to, to help me a little bit with some of these just to make sure that I'm staying on point. Position two is what we'll call up first. It's Planning and Zoning Commission. This person will also serve as the Chair Pro Tem. So Tom's right hand, if you will. We have applications submitted and a qualifying application from Jordan Scott. And I believe that is the only one. Is that correct?
Yes, that was the only planning and zoning member that applied.
I move to accept the position two, Planning and Zoning Commission position for Chair Pro Tem. The application being from Jordan Scott.
Second.
We have a motion from Gavin and a second from Sarah. Do we have discussion council? Okay, Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Buck Shapiro? All right, all right. Welcome, welcome, Chair Pro Tem, Jordan. Look forward to the good work that you're going to do. Let's call up position three, Park Commission. We have, sorry, go ahead, Wendy.
Yeah, I just wanted to pipe in since Buck and I are the liaisons for the Park Commission. I did reach out to both of the candidates today, Phil McDuffie and David Raymond. They are both amazing candidates. They both have their master's degrees. They both live on Timberline. They both serve on the Park Commission. I did receive a response back from David Raymond that he is interested in serving in this position and I hadn't heard back from Phil McDuffie today, but I believe he's interested as well. Looking at both of their resumes, what, the reason I reached out to them is I said, have y'all discuss this because I don't want this to be contentious. I don't want anyone to have their feelings hurt. We have to nominate one. And they hadn't discussed it and given me a direction one way or another. So I would nominate David Raymond for the position. I, I think that they're both equally qualified. I just, David Raymond's MBA in finance seems to be something that is a really big thing for the, the master plan. So that would be my nomination now. And just thank Phil McDuffie because he is a community member who's really involved. He's the Chair of the Park Commission and he is a good guy and absolutely qualified to do this as well. And it was just, we have to nominate one or the other, so.
All right. We have a motion from Amy, or sorry, from Wendy and a second from Amy for nomination of David Raymond to position three. We have discussion council?
One of my concerns with him is he also lives right next door to Ryan Clinton. And, you know, that's, seems a pretty heavy concentration of people right there. It would be nice to spread them out a little bit more than that. Phil also has background in computer science, which requires a lot of strategic thinking and very orderly thinking. He's also a longer-term resident in the neighborhood. And I think that, that he would, and, and also in real estate investing entrepreneurship, I think that he would be a really good asset to the community and also spread out the, the location of our members a little bit more.
I guess we'll vote on this one and then if it doesn't go through, then we can ask for a second motion?
Yeah, we're, we've got, yeah, we've got a motion on, or action pending. I'm just leaving it open to the dais for conversation. Is there any, any other discussion or, or thoughts, council? If not, then I'll call.
Well, Phil, I did actually just get a text from Phil who said that he didn't hear anything from Wendy. So it's probably why he didn't, probably why he didn't get back to you.
I texted he and David Raymond on the same text message with the cellphone number that he had on his application for this appointment. So it, I texted them in a group text at the same time with his phone number that is on his application.
Okay. Discussion, additional discussion council? Okay, not hearing any. I'll call for the vote then. Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Kevin Massengill?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sarah Hudson?
No.
Buck Shapiro? Aye. Okay. Welcome, David Raymond, to position three. And we'll move on to position four. Position four is Utility Commission. We have, again, two excellent applicants in Phil Dixon and Ronald Hasso.
Oh, this is the Utility Commission?
It is. Position, sorry, position four.
In there. I'd be happy to take one.
Sarah, do you have any comments as the liaison to the Utility Commission?
Not really. They're both very new members of the Utility Commission. I think Phil has lived here a little longer than, than Ronald has, but I have not had the opportunity to work with either one of them very much. So I don't have, I don't have a strong preference one way or the other.
This is a tough one, council. Well, they're all going to be tough, but I've had the opportunity to, to meet both Phil and Ronald and they're both, they're both pretty good, good guys. I was really happy to see two applications from Utility come over, so.
I would say that Phil has, is not a resident of Timberline and we're getting pretty heavily focused on Timberline already. And so it might be, you know, good to not have the whole strike force dedicated to people that live on Timberline.
That's a good point.
Yeah, both Phil and Ronald are, I know Ronald's current, currently on Timberline, but he's also going to be, both Phil and Ronald will live near the park at some point. So there certainly is that demographic spread as well. But, you know, obviously, our comprehensive plan is about much more than just the commercial district. So I do think in a good approach is to make sure that voices from across the community are represented.
Well, I reached out to Phil because I do know him and, and wanted to make sure that we had qualified applicants for each spot and felt like he would be a great representative. So I'll make a motion to appoint Phil Dixon to position four.
Second.
We have a motion from Amy and a second from Wendy. Discussion council? Not hearing any. Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Buck Shapiro?
Aye.
Great. Welcome, Phil and Ronald. Thank you very much and appreciate everyone's continued service on Utility. For position five, the Rollingwood Community Development Corporation, we have Barry Del Cambré and David Smith. Again, two very strong candidates. I have not had the opportunity to speak to Barry specifically about this role. He's, you know, more than qualified as his resume shows. David Smith, he and I did speak very briefly. He's obviously a long-term resident, a longer-term resident, I guess, here in the city. But I think the thing that really appealed to me on David Smith's application is his background in planning at the, at the federal level, specifically working with the Department of the Interior, planning with some of our national parks. So hard, hard to, hard to gloss over that kind of experience being contributed. With that said, I don't think you can go wrong with either one. Both, both are going to be fantastic in this, in this capacity.
I was hoping that they would have talked to each other and been able to work it out so we wouldn't have to make these hard decisions. But I appreciate them both being willing to serve and agree that they would be great candidates. And Ronald Hasso's resume was impressive too, and I appreciate him having applied for it and would have voted for anyone who applied, like all of them are extremely qualified. I would make a motion to appoint David Smith for the position on position five.
Second.
We have a motion from Wendy and a second from Amy. Do we have additional discussion, council? Not hearing any. Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Buck Shapiro?
Aye.
And just so that I'm clear on this and our audiences too, in the events that we had multiple applicants for specific positions, do those applications then go back into the general pool to fill the, the at-large positions? No.
We don't have any at-large positions left.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you can tell them, my apologies, guys. That's, that's me not having enough coffee today. Yeah, apologies. So items, position six then, Board of Adjustments. Now, we have a single applicant in the form of Chris Braden. Hard to argue with Chris Braden.
Yeah. It gives me great pleasure to move to accept the nomination or the application for position six for Board of Adjustments for Chris Braden.
I second.
And a motion from Gavin and a second from Buck. Any discussion, council?
Sorry, I didn't second fast enough. I totally think Chris Braden.
If we're going to let die on the vine, it would have been hilarious.
Well, just, just.
Hey, Mayor, can we vote real quick? Because you're going to lose to me.
You got it. Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Buck Shapiro?
Aye.
Great. Next up, we have position seven, Westlake Chamber of Commerce. Next up, we have position seven, Westlake Chamber of Commerce, at-large member. We reached out to the Westlake Chamber and they recommended Meredith Knight. Meredith Knight has applied. Do we have any motion to open up discussion, council?
I move to appoint Meredith Knight to position seven on behalf of the Westlake Chamber.
We have a motion from Amy and a second from Wendy. Discussion, council?
Thanks, Meredith, for being willing to serve.
Yeah, and appreciate the Chamber spending some time talking to us about what's going on and the importance for all stakeholders involved there. Any other conversation, discussion, council? If not, Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Buck Shapiro? We lost Buck, but we have four votes in favor. So position eight, commercial property owner. We had one application that was flagged as a qualifying applicant. Wally Grainer, Wallace Grainer, sorry, Wally, owner of Palisades.
I would love to move to appoint Wallace Grainer, also known as Wally, to position eight.
Second.
A motion from Amy and a second from Wendy. Discussion, council?
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Grainer for applying. I've had the opportunity to meet with him several times over the years, and he really has been a very active participant in talking about B Caves Road. I know it has been really important to him to make sure that we solve the low-water bridge issue that's on B Caves Road in a way that is cost-effective and also is forward-thinking. And I also know that shared driveways and the positions of driveways on B Caves Road are really important to him. And there's a number of other things that I think that he has actively wanted to participate with the city, and he'll have some really great insight for the strike force and what it's like to be a commercial property owner over the last, you know, how many ever decades he's owned the Palisades, what has changed, and kind of what he's limited in right now and what he hopes to see on B Caves Road to make it a safer road.
We have a motion and a second. Additional discussion, council? In that case, Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Buck Shapiro, did we get you back? Okay. Mr. Grainer, thank you very much and welcome to the strike force for position eight. So I tell you what, do we want to, Ashley or Amber, do we want to recap the positions just for a level of clarity? That's everything, positions one through 13?
So we've got, for position one is Tom Farrell, two is Jordan Scott, three is David Raymond, four is Phil Dixon, five is David Smith, six is Chris Braden, seven is Meredith Knight, eight is Wally Grainer. And then for council member selections, Gavin's was Drew Clayhive, Sarah's was Brooke Brown, Wendy's was Ryan Clinton, Amy's was Jeff Green, and Buck's was Mo Boyle. That is your strike force.
Great. Guys, I want to thank again everybody for taking the time to apply, taking the time to kind of educate yourself on what we're doing. Council, thank you very much for taking the time to reach out to the public and, you know, just help everybody understand the challenges that we're facing. I'm really looking forward to seeing what the strike force is able to do and suspect it's quite a bit. As Gavin mentioned earlier, for all these applications, guys, there's a lot of ways that we can be involved in this community. There are a number of positions open for boards and commissions. I hope, sincerely hope, that we can, you won't mind when Ashley sends an email to all of these applicants, letting them know what other positions might be available for boards and commissions. And it is my sincere hope that everybody who's not already involved in a board or commission considers spending a little bit of time that way, learning how our community is working, as well as lending us all a hand in how we can do an even better job. With that, let's move on to item three, which is discussion, possible action to direct the city administrator to send a letter to all Rollingwood residents regarding the comprehensive plan. What we have is a very, very well-done, I believe, double-sided fact sheet, if you will. The idea was really the hard work primarily of council members, Wendy Hundley with Gavin Massengill lending a hand there. I think it is exceptionally well-done, very informative and exceedingly helpful, straight to the point, and really, I hope the community, rather, will appreciate the council's responsiveness to the communication criticism that we have received over the last several months. In any case, Wendy, this is, again, very, very well-done. Is there anything that you would like to present or suggest before putting it to a vote?
I just have the document pulled up here. If any council members have any edits or changes, the thought behind this was, you know, we just want to make sure that we send out, this is an agenda item I wanted so that we could send out an update to the community because we haven't really done that. And so the idea behind this is to send it out via snail mail, to put it out on Facebook, to put it out on Nextdoor, to put it out on our SWIFT 911, just to give an update from the city council perspective on what has happened and then why there is concern in the community, and then what we have done to address those concerns. And hopefully, this will help to alleviate some of the stressors that our neighbors have felt when we started this process and the workshop in a way that caused some anxiety among our community. So I'm open to any edits or changes, and I appreciate Gavin's help working on it and really polishing it up. So with that said, I have my Word document up, so I can make any changes.
So I just have a process question on this. When did this get added to the agenda? When did it get posted to the agenda?
The update itself, like the agenda item or the document for the update?
The draft document.
The draft document got updated today because Gavin and I worked on it late last night, and then, again, there were some edits this morning. So it has been something that I have worked on since I decided to put the agenda item together, and putting this together wasn't like an hour. It was, it took some time to put it.
I'm sure, and that's not the point. My concern is that we have a habit of doing this where we put things on the agenda, but we don't have attachments, and then the attachments get on after the agenda's posted, and we don't get notices anymore that the agenda items have changed. Our old system used to give us a notice that the agenda item had changed, and now we don't get that. And so I didn't even know there was a document posted.
Yeah, I had to read it out to you line by line if that.
No, no, that's not, that's not respectful of everybody's time that's on the meeting. I just think in the future, it would be nice if we got this stuff farther ahead of time or if something is added to the, you know, posted to the agenda, that we get a notice that something has changed, so we know to go back and look at it again. Because, you know, I looked at the agenda when it was first posted, and I didn't go back to look and see how many times it got changed since I looked at it initially. So it would be nice to have some more advanced notice instead of all of a sudden finding out that it's here when we get to the meeting.
I appreciate your comments. I understand your feelings on that. It's not always possible to, since we're a council that's a working council, and this is the work of single council members, and this isn't our full-time job, there are going to be times that we are putting on an agenda item and we don't have the actual context of what the agenda item should be ready to go. And although I work hard on the agenda items that I put up there and that I work on and the content that I put out to try and do that, in this situation, I added the agenda item at the same time I started on it, and it wasn't possible for me to have finished it any sooner. So I appreciate your comments, and the process with the city council, getting updates is something that I'm sure that Amber and Ashley are taking note of, but in their defense, they didn't get the final update until 10:00 a.m. this morning. And they're working on it.
It's just, it's hard to give an informed vote on something that we don't get to see before we are in the meeting, so.
I'm taking the time that we need right now for everybody to read through it. I mean, it feels like they don't have the time to do that. I'll defer, but.
It's a fairly quick read, I think you'll see. The whole idea, I think, was to be to the point and really help the community get a very readily and easily digestible set of facts around the current circumstances and how we've arrived where we are, and specifically, as part of the timeline shows, where we are in this process, which has been consistently indicated as a point of anxiety and concern among the community. So I'm happy to let folks spend the next 15, 20 minutes, if you need that long, to read two pages. If not, I'd encourage council to either consider taking some action or maybe putting this aside for another day, in which case, you know, hopefully, you'll do a little bit additional community reach out to assuage any additional anxiety that may cause.
I would move to direct the city administrator to send out an update to the community on the comprehensive plan as attached in the agenda. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, go for it.
Just a real quick look through that. It doesn't look like there's any mention of building code discussion for the residential properties. And I thought that, to me, that's something really important that we need to address in this comprehensive plan, and there were a lot of comments in the survey that was done about building code, things that need to be addressed so that we can determine what the residential part of the city is going to look like going forward. That's not really addressed at all, it doesn't appear.
I mean, I don't know how you want to call that out. I mean, we're talking about future land use. Everything that you suggested there, land uses, whether it be commercial or residential, is using the land, the eight tenths of a square mile that is Rollingwood.
Well, we're not, we're not talking about changing stuff from residential to something else, so it's still going to be residential, but it's, to me, a more thorough discussion of how we're, how we are envisioning the building code for what we want the residential part of the city to continue to look like, you know? So there's nothing in there about tree ordinance or, you know, setbacks or height restrictions or fences, or none of that is included in there.
I don't know how we can comment on something when we're not at that point in the process. It's just, I mean, I'm happy to put in any updates. I have the Word document pulled up, so if you have specific language you would like to add in there, I'm open to amending it in any way that you think might be helpful. Maybe under areas of interest in planning, we could put residential, we could put another bullet and add residential code.
That would be helpful. I just, to me, it's a really important part of this process, and we need to at least mention the fact that it exists.
I don't agree with that language. I think from the beginning of this process, the direction that we gave as a council to the RFP that was put together and to what the direction that we've been going is that the primary part of the focus is going to be looking at the commercial corridor, and we will get into some of the residential stuff. But if we need to put an area of interest, we could put the drainage criteria manual, we could put the tree ordinance, but just a generic statement that we're going to look at residential code, when in fact, we're looking at the entire body of code, it seems like it's going to cause more confusion.
Maybe land development?
Well, we have items on here for the park master plan. That's not a part of the commercial corridor.
These are actually, we already have, these are already.
These are the, this is the work that's already been done. I'm not, I'm not taking exception with, if there need to be clarification, that I'm not sure that singling out the residential code is what we as a council have actually agreed to do.
I think that there is some component of our land development code modification in Phase Five, where we're looking at potential issues. So perhaps we can put it under that phase, right, where it's the land development code modification. It's just, there's not actually a piece of, like, anything that, I mean, we could point to our code of ordinances, obviously, which is what are the rules that direct our development for our residential homes right now. And it's been, you know, something that's been modified throughout the years. If we wanted kind of a work product for people to be able to refer to, we could say Rollingwood Code of Ordinances.
That seems more generic to me. Like, we're, I mean, we're, we are, one of our deliverables is update, recommended updates to the code, so I'm not taking exception with that, but the focusing just on the residential part of it is not something that we did, and we had discussion multiple times when we were going through the process of putting together the RFP and other points throughout this, that the primary focus of this was not residential, it was on the commercial corridor. So I don't, I don't, I'm not taking exception if we want to add the code of ordinances in generically, but to single out the residential code, residential code, I think, is misleading.
Maybe we could say land development code modification as the bullet point at the bottom of the areas of interest under putting it all together?
I think that aligns with what the deliverables were that we agreed with, with the consultant.
Okay, thumbs up or thumbs down? This is the way Gavin taught us. Amy, thumbs up on that?
Land development, generic.
Sarah, thumbs up, thumbs down on land development code modification?
That's fine.
Okay, I'm going to update that. And is there any other updates that you'd like to see? Also, if anyone in the community wants to raise their hand and give some feedback, I'm open to the community feedback, since we prefer to send this out to the community to be helpful if there's any. I see there is somebody with their own raise.
Jordan.
Go ahead, Jordan. You're recognized. Amber, you want to open them up? Three minutes, if you don't mind, sir.
You can unmute, Jordan.
Sorry, it was, the system was messing with my computer. Appreciate y'all's hard work on this today and everybody taking their time during the day to do this. I would just say that from a planning and zoning standpoint, we really would appreciate land development code feedback for our residential side, not only, but as part of, as part of the, the struggle we're having to understand some of our old code on the land development side of the residential, on the residential side of our land development code, we needed. So thank you for doing that, is all I was going to say.
Are you good with the, with the wording on that? Does it, is it helpful just to say land development code modification?
I think so, yes. So appreciate that.
Thank you, Jordan.
Thanks, Jordan. Any other additional comments?
My only other comment is I, I did talk to Tom earlier this week and I know that one of the things he really wants to do is to make sure that all of our residents are aware of when the strike force meetings are. And so I was looking through this and I guess the, the Strike Force website that's pointed to here will have, kind of, will that be where it kind of holds all of the work that the Strike Force is doing?
Right now, it just holds the document of the Strike Force formation, but we can certainly make a Strike Force landing page with all of that, for sure.
I think, I think that whatever is in this document, if that's the landing page where people can go to for, to follow along with what meetings are coming up and what work has been done and what public comments have been made. I know that he really wants to make sure that there's, there's no question in the community that everyone knows that that is an opportunity where they can comment and how to comment. So having that.
So it's a vanity URL, which means it's not really the address of the page, so we can point it anywhere. So right now, it points to the actual document that, where we formed the, but we can create a page and put that document on the page and it's easy to do.
Okay. Yeah, I think if that's the landing page for the Strike Force, that'll make it consistent when he puts out his information.
Great point. Yeah.
Hey, so if you're going to do that, then Wendy, maybe under Strike Force, that last line where it says more info at colon, maybe it's more info and future meeting dates at colon.
Got it. Perfect. All right. So if everybody, is it, are there any other thoughts or feedback about any? I tried to find all the typos and I'm, even after I submitted it, I still missed a couple. So I appreciate.
I found one typo.
Where? I want to fix it.
Okay, in the second paragraph, under why do we need a comprehensive plan? In the third sentence, comprehensive plan should be capitalized.
Ah, thank you. Okay. Sarah, you're really good at editing, so if you want to read through it and give me any feedback for, for things that you see, I'd love that.
Wendy, I found one misspelling.
Where's that?
It's in the phase four bubble. Implement.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I see that. Okay, got it. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thanks for the hard work, Gavin and Wendy, on pulling this together and all the different components that it has in it. I think, I hope that people will stop and read through it and also refer back to previous meetings that I know we, as a city, have worked really hard now to increase our transparency where residents can go and listen to the meeting and, and watch it. And it's available on demand for anyone who can do that. And of course, I, I'm always a little concerned that if there's residents who don't have an internet connection, that I think the next stage is just making sure we have a way for people to come in and, and watch. But if somebody needs help with that, I know that Ashley can arrange that. So I hope that people will, if they have further questions, will watch past meetings or also start tuning into future meetings.
I was happy to help and it was all Wendy. I was just the editor. And apparently not a very good one because I miss several topics.
Okay, in the, in the section under putting it all together, it says the city has various studies and assessments the we have undertaken. I think that should be that.
Yes, got it.
And then it says, which consists of a series of publications. And I think I would call those documents instead of publications, because they haven't really been published, to me, means more general circulation than what we've done with those, so.
Great, yeah. I have one under areas of interest in planning include, where we added the last bullet point, land development code modification. In parentheses, I thought maybe put zoning, since we have parentheses around all of the other things to kind of give a little idea of what that means. Does that sound okay?
Zoning to me is, doesn't include the building code criteria themselves, to me. That's more like, is it residential or is it commercial or is it, you know, hospital or whatever, as opposed to the actual?
Code instead? I could use the word code or city.
I mean, because that's, that's not really what Jordan had asked for input on.
Yeah, that's, I guess the land development code, though, is zoning, because it says zoning, it's part of our zoning in our ordinances. So it could, but it may be confusing. I could also.
Building and zoning, like.
Building and zoning, okay. I promise I'm spelling the words correctly. And capitalizing. Okay, got it. Ooh, I found one. Where's the concern? Pegasus held a kickoff meeting. I should not have K capitalized. I can find one every time I open this document. It's driving me crazy.
So on the little graphic down at the bottom of page one, the font is so tiny, it's hard for me to read, but I just can't tell if some of the letters are chopped off on the far right.
They are all there. I used a different graphic. I tried several different graphics in Word to see if I could get it bigger. And this is the most easily read one, but in print, it's going to be hard to read. They're, they're pretty tiny. But hopefully if they're directed to the CP website, we'll have an update on the website that will be easier to, to read. I think that that part needs to be updated, the comprehensive plan landing page. Amber, is the, is the city updating that or are the consultants updating that? Or how is that working?
The city has been in updating the website in conjunction with being supplied information from the consultant.
Okay. Maybe we can work on, whenever we have a timeline, we'll just make sure to link to the Strike Force information there. And then I did notice that there's a, a link there for people to submit comments and it goes directly to the consultant. And I'm wondering if we could change that to come to the city first.
We can change that.
Okay.
Also, there will be a new webpage. We had to create one to create this meeting for the meeting platform as well. So the Strike Force is going to have its own webpage. So we'll link it into the comp plan webpage as well and keep them both up to date.
Perfect. Thank you.
So when we send this out to residents, are we going to include the members of the Strike Force?
On this update here, or are they going to get, it would go to all residents?
Right, but that's what I'm saying. It would be nice if, when we provided this to the residents, we also let them know who the members of the Strike Force are.
Maybe we could put that on the landing page for the Strike Force on the website? Or we could add another page. I don't know how we would, I mean, we could do a third page, but.
Yeah, just as long as we have the names available someplace.
Yeah, that's a good point. We'll put that on the landing page.
Or maybe we can add to the bottom of the first paragraph on the Strike Force that says Strike Force members are listed on the webpage or something like that, so that people know where they can find out who's on the Strike Force.
I could change that sentence where Gavin said, you know, to add meeting dates. I could say more info, future meeting dates and members. Or more, or I can say more information on membership, on members and future meeting dates.
Yeah.
I'll say for more information on members of Task Force and future meeting dates, visit the link. Oh, Strike Force. I don't know why I called it a task force. That's boring. Strike Force. Sorry, okay.
Hey Wendy, on the, on the little, pull it on the second page that says, how can I listen to past meetings? On the fourth meeting, the September 16th meeting, on the, the start time, is, is it, did it start at minute 50?
Well, that Gavin noticed that also, but what happened is it's such a long meeting. It's a six-hour meeting that it starts counting backwards, so there's only 50 minutes left. So you could have negative 50.13. At least that's the way I saw it. So that's why I put the slash six hours and 52 minutes. Because that's the way it showed up to me when I was looking at the meeting.
Oh, like that's the way YouTube shows it? Okay, that makes sense. I mean, it, like intuitively, I was trying to figure out what it meant, but if you're, if you're actually clicking on the link and that's what you need, the information you need, that makes sense.
You're scrolling through the bar. Hopefully it shows, it shows up that way.
Okay. Maybe I'll click it and see what happens.
Yeah, that period trial run. That's how it looks. Also, just to point out to council members that anyone who wants to get updates, if you want to jot this down, just texting SWIFT911 to 99538. Anyone in our city can download our alert app and then you can get alerts on your phone about all of the, the different city updates that we send out through that platform. Because I know that there have been questions that some people have had that, you know, they haven't maybe opted in and they don't have a landline. The only way that we would have their contact information from SWIFT911 is if there's a landline, because it uses reverse 911 to get the data. And right now, I think a lot of people have canceled their landlines, so we may not necessarily have their phone numbers or email addresses because of that. So if they want to subscribe, then they can go in there and add in their phone numbers and emails that they might want to receive contact information from the city.
Okay, so Wendy, I tried pulling up the video and for me, it, it shows the actual, I'm guessing the timestamp is like five, colon, 10, I, I don't know exactly which one it is, but like when I go 50 minutes back, it's five, colon, 10, colon, oh, eight, or right around there.
Okay, five, 10, oh, eight.
Well, I don't know if that's the right number. I'm just saying that I, my, my, when I, when I pull up YouTube, I'm not getting that negative number.
Wow.
It might just be, it might be easier to just say the, the actual number. I am noticing how tired I looked in the meeting.
I agree. It must be something on my computer, but yeah, I'll say item starts at five, 10.
Well, I need to figure out exactly what number it is, but if it's 50, all right, let me.
I think the difference is Wendy, you're linking it to the, it'd be the IP video talk video and Amy's looking at what's on YouTube. Yes.
Which if you click on your link and you go to.
What I have is YouTube, but for some reason, that's, I hobbled with it and I, and that's the only reason it would show up for me. It might be something in my settings. But if, if you have a, a way that shows up more universally, that's much better, because I think that was confusing.
Well, let me, let me try to find it now, because I'm, I would just say, well, let me, let me pause this meeting for a second. I'll listen, see where it starts.
I just was trying to direct people so they didn't, you know, they could at least have a starting point. So I know that most people want to listen to the entire meeting, but they're more interested in the comprehensive landing as the starting point.
And if we feel we have discussed some point under the other items that are left to discuss, then we can re-vigorate between on, does it sound fair to?
I couldn't hear it.
Okay, I would, sorry, I didn't mean to leave that. I meant to mute. I would just say five, 10, zero.
Perfect. And if everybody gives me a thumbs up when they're ready to vote on it and they feel like all the edits have been made, then we can. Gavin's thumbs up, Amy's thumbs up, Sarah's thumbs up. Okay, great. I have saved all of those edits and I will send an updated version to Ashley and Amber. And I'd modify my motion to say with the updates discussed during the city council meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Wendy and a second from Amy. Additional discussion, council? Not hearing any. Amy Potillo?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
Okay, and we do not have Buck. All right, so the motion carries for zero. Thank you all for taking the time to work through that. Item four, discussion possible action on resolution number 2020-10-02-04 to nominate a candidate for the Travis Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. This is obviously something that is critically important to our community. As we discussed even just a couple of weeks ago while talking about our tax rate. Amy or Wendy, would you guys like to provide some color as to why this is on our agenda and what we all hope to accomplish through this consideration?
Sure, I'll start. Some of us from the city council met with, with the TCAD appraiser sent out a message. TCAD appraiser sent out a message to the community that they would no longer be able to use MLS to appraise, um, the values of homes. And so they weren't going to be reappraising properties. Um, so after that meeting, which really does impact the school board budgets, um, pretty negatively, it's not as much with our city. Um, you know, one of the things that we looked into is just who are our TCAD Board of Directors and how is the system set up? And how do we nominate, um, uh, individuals for that, uh, for that Board of Directors? And I still have actual questions about the process. Um, there, there is state code that shows how that nomination process should happen. Um, that isn't really lining up with how TCAD is, um, sending out information to, uh, taxing entities to nominate, um, people for the board. Uh, I can only speculate that at some point the Board of Directors changed the process, which they are allowed to do. And, um, that it just happened before I was involved in the process. And so, um, the state law allows each taxing entity to nominate one person for each position that's open on the board. And right now there are five positions open. Uh, the current, um, nomination process is that each taxing entity in West Travis County, like they've broken this up by different regions of the county, um, that we're allowed to appoint one person for that person who represents our area. Um, so I, um, you know, we've been in contact with Ains ISD and, and their school board member, John Havenstite, has, um, agreed to serve in, in this position for the nomination and I think he would be great. And I don't want us to dilute, dilute any votes for him. Um, so I would, I would move that we nominate, uh, John Havenstite for the TCAD Board of Directors. Um, and that, uh, by resolution and, um, but I also think that we should, um, put these dates and, and, um, considerations for the appointment process in our calendar so that we can, um, coordinate with other taxing entities and see if there is a better way to do this for our citizens. And, um, you know, have a system, uh, if there's enough taxing entities who want to change, then we can change the, the selection process. And we can get a different, uh, we can get more members on that board. Who, uh, I should say also that the TCAD Board of Directors, their primary function is to hire, uh, the chief appraiser and to manage her contract. And so, um, and they also approve the budget. And so I think those are two really important things, um, that we really want, um, maybe more people who, um, we can appoint to those positions available for us. So that was my motion and my spiel. Anyone else can add anything.
So just to clarify, to second the motion, you're moving to nominate John Havenstite for candidate for Travis County Appraisal Board of Directors, uh, per resolution 2020-10-02-04?
Yes, thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, council, we have a motion and a second. Additional discussion?
Um, I just would echo Wendy's note that the, in trying to understand what the process is for what votes we as a taxing entity can, can make. There's a disconnect between what the state code says and somewhere in there, there's a document that the Board of Directors for TCAD has at some point in time approved that indicates how the voting position or how the positions that are on their board were selected and then how they get voted in. And I have not been able to find that after some extensive searching through their minutes online. Um, so I think I'm going to have, we're going to have to put in a PIR probably to get a copy of it. Um, can't find any bylaws. Uh, there's just not a lot of information available. And TCAD only recently started putting their meetings up, um, online. So there's not really recordings to go back very far and, and listen to the recordings either. But I think there's still some, I, I think for this year, for the deadlines for this year, from what I've looked at, kind of the only thing that we have that we can try to do to, to get some, um, additional or different representation is to, to try to join with some other entities in Western Travis County to have one candidate that we all are voting for together. And so I would, I, I think John Havenstite is a, a, a really great representative. The school board, I think, is going to have a lot more resources to put behind getting the votes than we will. Um, just knowing that they have, uh, different attorneys that are working for them. I think that they'll be able to, to get that pushed on. Um, and I don't know that we as a city have the resources to do that right now. But for next year, I think that there could be some opportunities to look forward to, to trying to make sure we understand, um, whether we actually are being given our share of votes in accordance with the amount of taxable property that we have in our city, which is what it should be based on. Um, and so.
I think Travis Cat, I mean, they should be able to provide us today with the voting entitlements for each taxing unit. I mean, they obviously calculate them and they, they should be able to provide those upon request. It shouldn't, in my mind, require us to do it and make a PIA harum.
So maybe that's something Amber can ask for. I know, uh, sometimes they take a few days, but, um, if we could get that before the next meeting to understand. I think Amber, the, the thing that I can't find is our voting entitlements. And then also I can't find anywhere online, um, where the Board of Directors took the action that increased the, the number of actual seats from five to the 10 that they have right now. And so state code allows five and says that the Board of Directors can then increase it to 10. So I think it would be helpful to see the actual meeting minutes and the, the order that was written up when they went from five to 10. And then how they decided what the rationale was for when they decided what those, each of those 10 seats are and who sits in them. And then what Gavin said to you, the voting entitlements, because all of that is, um, I mean, I, I think we've, you know, we've, we've found out when I've asked other questions and we've asked TCAD, sometimes they just don't even have it. Like it takes them weeks to collect it. So hopefully this is something they actually have on file.
And they're probably going to tell us, well, it depends on how much, how much you taxed on last year. I mean, because the formula is, is pretty specific in, in the code. So that's fine. We get it that you haven't calculated this year's entitlement yet, but we at least want to see what last year's entitlements were.
I, I thought in the code it said it would be based on the previous year's entitlements, like the previous taxable, so they should have it.
Well, that's true. They should.
Mm-hmm. And it shouldn't have changed for anybody unless there was some development that just had a bunch of new stuff go online. Because nobody got reappraised.
Right. They didn't do their job, so it shouldn't change much.
But to have 10 members on the board and have five of those members are appointed by, uh, taxing entities. And then each taxing entity is only allowed to appoint one for their specific area. Um, it seems like, you know, we may want to revisit that and make sure that it is actually, um, being representative of our, what our taxing units want and that we're able to advocate for our taxpayers in a more effective way. Um, because our taxes just got raised, I saw, uh, by Travis County. So, um, this is a real good time to have that conversation.
Oh, the other thing I was going to say, the other thing we could do this year, I forgot about this, um, is Travis County's appointment for one of their two seats. Because Travis County Commissioner's Court gets to appoint two seats. That person's appointment is coming, there's one of them that comes up this year. And so perhaps prior to the next, to our October 15th meeting, um, if anybody wants to put their thinking cap together on, thinking caps together on, uh, potentially having a resolution where we indicate the types of things as a city we'd like to see from Travis County's appointee to that fee, that might be another option.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I'm sure they'll listen.
Right. I mean, we've, we've had a lot of success in the past. That's why I thought maybe thinking cap this time.
Yeah.
Okay, council. Well, you got a, you got a motion, uh, and a second. Any additional discussion? Not hearing any. Uh, just to be clear, uh, so that everyone is clear, uh, it's adopting the resolution that is presented in your packet. Is that correct?
With the, just adding the name John Havenstite.
John Havenstite, yep. Great. Um, appreciate, uh, John's willingness to step up and serve in, in that capacity. Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sarah Hudson? Sarah Hudson? Sorry, Sarah, I think you're muted.
I was. My dog was barking. Sorry. Um, aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
And, uh, we do not have a buck yet, so four has it. Uh, resolution is adopted, uh, in support of, uh, John Havenstite for a position on the Board of Directors, uh, for our vote, uh, for a position on the Board of Directors, uh, Travis County Appraisal District. And I have every confidence that John is going to make sure that TCAD does its job, um, in the future. Um, all right.
To be clear though, this is the nomination for him. It'll have to come back before us.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And the code says that we can cast all of our voting entitlement toward one person or we can spread out our votes. So, um, my intention is that we cast all our votes for John.
Yeah, I think we need to put our eggs in one basket.
I think he'd be a great representative, so I'm appreciative of him taking this on with also being a school board member, which is a tough job right now. So shout out to John.
All right. Um, well, everybody, that, that concludes the agenda. Uh, do we have any, anything that we've missed? Amber, Ashley? Council? All set. Let me tell you what, uh, how do you feel about adjournment then?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, Amy Patillo?
Aye.
Wendy Hundley?
Aye.
Sarah Hudson?
Aye.
Gavin Massengill?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Thank you, uh, folks for, for tuning in. And the one comment that we have outstanding apologies, uh, is Jordan Scott asking if the strike force can get T-shirts. So.
That happen, right?
What's that?
Clearly we need to make that happen.
Well.
The council doesn't even have T-shirts.
I mean.
Yeah, but I don't, I, I think it might, there might be a certain amount of benefit to, uh, helping, uh, the task force, uh, strike force rather, um, identify themselves in public. Uh, perhaps they get a T-shirt with a mandatory rule of, uh, at least, uh, two or three times around, uh, the city blocks, wearing the T-shirt, um, each week. So, um, anyway, thoughts for consideration. Appreciate everyone's time and I hope everyone has a great weekend.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.